Members of the board, I have good morning here, but I crossed that out and I put good afternoon. And now I crossed it out again. Good evening. My name is Judy Warren. I'm the Director of the Imboden Area Charter School. IACS is one of the oldest charter schools in Arkansas at 14 years. We are the smallest school in Arkansas with a population that ranges from 50 to 75 students each year. And we serve a unique population different from any school in Arkansas. Imboden Area Charter School is the heart on the map. It lies along Highway 63 at the center of Imboden, a rural community in northeast Arkansas about 45 miles northwest of Jonesboro. The blue Pentagon-shaped outline on the map represents the large surrounding area from which IACS historically drawn its students. The farthest place is being a 40-minute drive to IACS. The black line on the map represents our bus route that is a 50-mile loop and runs through 10 different communities. With the majority of our students being disadvantaged, transportation is a necessity, and we transport about 90 percent of our students each year. IACS focus is to provide a high-quality education that is tailored to the individual needs of our students. 100 percent of our teaching staff is fully certified with many requirements, and all but one teacher has a master's degree or higher. We serve USDA reimbursable breakfast and lunch with fresh fruit and vegetables daily. We had our child nutrition review last year and had no violations. This year, we have begun an after-school extended learning program for students who are below level in reading and math, and teachers have seen a significant improvement in learning. And our small and inviting atmosphere encourages our parents to be active, to participate in their children's learning. Many through a new program we offer called Parents as Teachers, and we actually teach the parents how to help their children at home. Our facility is leased through a private individual from the Imboden community. It's 3,200 square feet and houses our four large multi-age classrooms and the school offices. We also have a large playground area with an open field and equipment. Every day, all students and teachers line up on the playground to participate in our cardio program to promote wellness. Parents play an important role in the daily life of IACS. We have successfully developed a relationship so that they feel very comfortable talking with us and are eager to partner with us to help their children succeed. 100 percent of our parents have attended both parent-teacher conferences every year, and 90 percent of our parents and their extended families volunteer and have areas in which they feel competent. Our demographics are unique to any school in Arkansas, which makes test score comparisons almost impossible. There are students in Arkansas who do have, or there, pardon me, there are schools in Arkansas who do have a high percentage of disadvantaged students, but IACS has a far higher percentage than schools in our area and the state average. I know there's a concern about enrollment, but our enrollment fluctuates within any year and from year to year. We have listed our beginning and ending enrollment numbers for each of the three years. Our current enrollment is 52 students. We actually got one today. I got a text. But no school in the state has the percentage of special education students that IACS has. At this time, we are at an all-time high of 35 percent. Almost all of these students come to us already identified. We refer very few students to special education, and many of these students have been in classrooms, and we place them with their peers with some pull-out time, which is the least restrictive environment for them. One student came to us in second grade from a self-contained classroom with a normal IQ and a medical diagnosis of ADHD. He did not know any letters or numbers. He is now a fifth grader. He's reading at fourth-grade level, appropriately interacts with his peers. However, he's not yet at a level to do well on the standardized tests. Many times when special education students are meant to think about students who are intellectually disabled. Most of the special education students we receive are categorized as specific learning disabled, which means they have a normal IQ, but there's a discrepancy between that IQ score and their achievement. Most of these students were identified because at some point they became lost academically, primarily because of their environmentally impoverished status. They lack the general world experiences needed to make connections with new information. Only a very small percentage of our special education students are intellectually disabled. In October of this school year, we had our monitoring visit from the Arkansas Special Education Unit, and our program was fully approved and we had no violations. We also have a higher percentage of gifted students than area schools and the state. So between gifted students and special education students, roughly 50 percent of our students are students that may not fit the traditional norms of the regular public schools. This graph compares IACS with Sloan-Hendrix and the state average in percentage of disadvantaged, special education, and gifted students for the last three contractual years. This next graph shows statistics less likely to be considered, and that is the number of homeless and foster students who attend IACS. The state has an average of 2 percent homeless and Sloan-Hendrix slightly above zero compared with IACS who has 13 percent average. Foster student average for the state is slightly above 0 percent. Sloan-Hendrix has about 1 and 1/2 percent. IACS, 10 percent. With this unique population, IACS provides a need-satisfying environment, trying to erase some of the students' concerns about survival needs. A teacher came to me for help one day with two little girls, sisters, who tended to stay in the bathroom, should have. And I told the teachers to call me the next time they sent the children to the restroom. And I watched at the door. I saw them each at a sink, water running. They had applied soap to their hands, their arms, their faces. They were washing and laughing. And I told them their teacher was waiting for them. They needed to wash more quickly and get back to class. But later that day, I found out they had no running water in their home. And so we allowed them to play and wash in the water. And learning comes in many forms that cannot be measured. We also have a highly mobile population. You can easily see this on the spreadsheet that we submitted as our additional information. You can see that if you go across to, in any particular student, they've attended several different schools. In three to four years, they may have attended five or six schools. They are highly mobile for many reasons. And some are not, you know, maybe able to pay their rent. Some are escaping law enforcement agencies, and they move between the three counties that are in our area. And some have violent relationships at home. Some are just unstable because of the lack of money. And so while we have them, we provide acceptance and a stable environment. Many students do not have the social skills or the clothing to be accepted by their peers. And because of our environment, students at IACS are never made to feel inferior by others. And because of their disadvantaged status, their lack of general knowledge affects their ability to make connections with the new information. Came to us in first grade with a letter from his teacher, who said there was definitely something wrong with him. He was either autistic, mentally challenged, or insane. He hid under his desk, and he refused to participate. He spoke to no, he was the only student who didn't know where the word wall was. He was the only student who colored his trees blue. And when his mother drove by the school during recess time, he was walking along the fence alone. He graduated from IACS. He was highly intelligent, reading and math at high school levels, and he was well-liked by his peers and teachers. He's a senior now. He's working part-time at Walmart, and he has scholarships already to attend Harding University in the fall. And this is just one story of many. In order to address their needs, the learning environment must be flexible and differentiated, yet highly structured, while addressing the required standards. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Wells, the Assistant Director, to explain how the curriculum and management systems combine to create this need-satisfying environment.
Mr. Wells, is that, okay. You have five minutes. Would you state your name for the record?
Matthew Wells.
Nine minutes, I'm sorry.
In summer, teachers spend hours disaggregating data on individual
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Matthew Wells.
Okay.
Evaluating curricular programs based on that data and then aligning materials with the Common Core standards. We also develop checklists for documentation that students have met those standards. Language arts curriculum is divided into three sections: whole group, small group, individualized instruction. Language vocabulary and writing are addressed through direct teaching in a whole-group setting. Informational text and paired reading aligns precisely with the Common Core State Standards and allows the teaching of strategies for reading in the content areas. Because these selections are content area, tie into the science and social studies objectives. During our read-alouds, teachers model quality reading and teach the elements of literature along with developing increased vocabulary and comprehension. Our read-alouds are comprised mainly of classics that present complexity and require high-level thinking skills for comprehension. For example, my sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade class is currently reading The Twelfth Night by William Shakespeare. When we look for curricular pieces, we look for published programs that come with formal or informal assessments. We then group students within our using the results of these assessments. These small groups may be addressing objectives that are below grade level, on grade level, or well above grade level. Students are assessed six times per year using a standardized test and may change groups based on assessment results. In these small groups, word study, spelling, and reading strategies. We use the accelerated reading program for individualized reading practice at the student's current level of reading. During this time, the teacher conducts small-group reading instruction or simply monitors students for individual reading progress. Our math curriculum is also divided into three sections: individual skills, whole-group instruction that addresses math concepts, and a review section where grade-level objectives are practiced. Students are tested for basic math skills. Then the needed skills are organized into an individual student folder and worked to master those skills. Whole-group instruction consists of concepts related to current grade levels and are aligned with Common Core State Standards, such as numbers and operations, geometry, or data analysis. Then, of course, we review and practice grade-level concepts daily. Science at IACS is a guided discovery hands-on program designed to allow students to learn scientific concepts through inquiry-based lessons. Social Studies is aligned to the Arkansas frameworks and utilizes a whole-group instructional method to present project-based learning. These projects emphasize content and its application to the real world. Even though our curriculum is aligned and tailored to meet individual needs, it would not be successful without our philosophy of student management. It may be difficult to imagine a public school without discipline, but because of the way in which we manage students, discipline involving more than a few conversations simply does not occur. The first thing we do is establish a high-quality relationship with our students. Because we are small, it's relatively simple to do. This encourages students to respect us and follow school rules. Our individualized learning program motivates students to learn. This feeling of success breeds an environment where students are motivated to continually succeed, thus creating intrinsic motivation. A classroom of intrinsically motivated students becomes a collaborative learning environment. Students become each other's cheerleaders, rooting each other on to continually succeed. Students are excited to learn and to help others learn, leading to an environment where students are at the center of learning and the teacher plays a mentor role, as described in the Danielson Framework of Tests. Our students enter typically two to four grade levels behind what they should be. In one year's time, IACS students make about one and a half years' progress. At the end of their first year, most have not reached grade level, and assessments show this. After one year, only 50 percent are proficient. Within three years at IACS, that has risen to about 70 percent. But after four or more years, proficiency rises to above 80 percent. I'd like to draw your attention to the handout we provided today. This is a listing of all students' benchmark proficiencies in literacy and math for the past three years, along with notations indicating students who were disadvantaged in special education, homeless, or foster. We provided scores dating back to 2009 for some students since their ending scores fell within the last three-year period. I would encourage you to look at these scores from left to right and notice the growth rather than looking at percentage of proficiency for a year. For example, on the first page, student number 21 was disadvantaged in special education and a foster child. He or she entered IACS well below grade level, but after three years was advanced on the benchmark, and in the fourth year was one point shy of matching the state average on the PARC exam.
He's really tall. Our enrollment numbers vary from year to year, causing our fund balance to rise and fall. However, we have continued a pain and adequate operating fund balance for 14 years while providing transportation, food service, and all of the things that are needed for our students, such as instructional items. We have never had on our audits, with the exception of segregation of duties. We have formal organizational structures that are written into our policy. We have procedural manuals and checklists for staff, and we've segregated duties at several key stages by utilizing Mr. Wells, Mr. McLeod, and the administrative assistant for additional monitoring. The original charter was written for 60 students, and our cap was increased to 150, not specifically by us. But we were included in commitments to possibly accommodate an influx of students from local schools that were closing. Our current building, in fact, will only accommodate 70 students. That's the maximum. But because our financial stability depends upon our enrollment, we have established a yearly plan of activities to recruit new students. And the postcard you received is just one example of the recruiting tools that we use. We're highly visible in the community and participate in lots of different organizations so that we're out there in the public, people can see us. With PICO Foods coming into Pocahontas, it is supposedly going to employ 1,000 new, 1,000 people. And there's a rock quarry starting in Black Rock that will employ 50 people. And we are confident enrollment will increase. I would now like to introduce Mr. James McLeod, who is our school counselor and classroom tutor.
You're five seconds, and I don't think I'm gonna be able to do it. So. Okay, you can come back at this ADA you have in the presentation, come back in the summary. The counselor can, okay? You want to let him summarize or? Okay, you have five minutes for summary, please.
James M. McLeod, I'm the counselor, certified tutor. I'm a retired superintendent. I have 28 years' experience as a superintendent. This is my 46th year as an educator, with the last seven of those years at the Imboden Area Charter School. If I had an opportunity to start my career over, I would adopt the philosophy of the Imboden Area Charter School. I strongly believe and support the concepts of the Imboden Area Charter School because hers as a successful model of innovative and good educational practices, and that if other public schools, regardless of size, would implement those practices, they could improve the educational environment and performance on a statewide basis. I was of the charter school concept when I was in the regular public school setting. Now, I believe the Imboden Area Charter School should be supported by the state as a school where learning is promoted for each student at the highest level possible, where quality, regardless of the quantity, and after all, is that not the goal of elementary and secondary education in Arkansas?
Thank you, Ms. McLeod. At this time, do we have any questions from board members for the staff of Imboden?
I was wondering, do you have any data to show how, I know you gave excellent example. Do you have any data of, as your students go on to their high schools, about how they adapt, how they do, and what their graduation rate is?
We are not getting that data for those students since they're no longer our students.
Yes, ma'am.
However, they come back, and they come back to visit. A lot of them come back. In fact, we've had three visit just this past week, and they all are doing very well. They say that if it hadn't been for us, they could never have been successful.
So the foundation's been built.
The foundation is there.
Any other questions?
Just, you know, when I, my primary reason for voting to review this was about the fund balance issue. And, you know, it's, it's stayed steady with some slight
Yes.
down movement.
Yes.
And, and that, that is worrisome, you know, in terms of the long-term sustainability of the school. Obviously, by one count, of course, by the age of the school, sustainability. But I guess I do continue to worry that there's some real fragileness to, to, to the operation. Can you kind of assage less of my fears there?
I can't, of course, predict any students will enroll from year to year, nor can I control the students who move in and out of the school on a regular basis. I mean, most schools are not getting new students at this time of year, but we are. I mean, they just keep coming in, and that is what happens every year. So we have a pattern of that occurring every single year. A lot of years, we start fairly low, and then we build up in the end. There are a few years we've started very high and have continued that throughout the year. So, I mean, it's something that, you know, we worry about too. But our ending fund balance, and you see $60,000, that doesn't sound like a lot of money for a regular public school. But for us, that's a lot of money. I mean, $60,000 goes a long way. And that's, you know, my prediction for the end of the year. I've carefully calculated, and $63,000 is where we should come in at the end of the year. You know, that's, that's all I can really say about that.
So how, how low could the student population go and you all remain in the black? What's your best estimate?
That's a difficult question too, because it depends on what our fund balance is. But it also depends on whether we are receiving growth funding or declining enrollment, and all of those monies play a part in that. And after four, original administrator, so after 14 years, it does this, and one year we get declining enrollment, one year we get growth funding. The next year, we get decline. It just has done that fairly consistently throughout our history. And there have been points in time where well over 100,000. And then the next year, we're gonna drop a little bit because maybe we don't have as many students. The next year, we ain't gonna get growth funding. We're gonna go back up again. And that's how the pattern has gone. So I can't imagine that it would not continue in that fashion. And the new people coming into the area, I think those are definitely the kinds of kids that would come to a charter school, such as ours.
And my final question, and obviously I trust you're gonna be around for a good while,
Yes.
but, but, you know, I often worry about, you know, found, who have been at a school for a long time and the school very dependent upon that person's talents and marker. Have you all begun at any, in any way, has your board begun, begun to think about a transition plan when?
Yes, actually, we started this year. And I have a plan. Mr. Wells has assumed several duties this year so he can learn all, you know, the entire operation. And, you know, I don't have any plans at this moment to retire, but someday that will come.
Yeah.
But yes, that's, we started it this year, and I said, we've got to have somebody who knows. And that's a very big concern of mine. I don't want to put 14 years of my life into something and then have it just go because no one understands or no one knows what to do.
Thank you very much.
What percent of your budget is $63,000? I mean, like, budget, and you have 63 carryover. Is your budget 630,000, or is that like 5 percent or 10 percent, or? Because like in Little Rock, a thousand dollars a kid'd be 23 million dollars, so.
Right, right. Well, you know, our revenue this year, as of April 1st, is 299,000. So that's our total revenue. But back when we presented to the charter authorizing panel, they had said we had a $1,000 legal balance. But I, we believe that this was calculated on January 1st. But as of April 1st, our legal fund balance was 76,800. And we had categorical funds too of almost 21,000. And so our year-to-date revenue is exceeding our expenditures. And the actual revenue for the year will exceed our budgeted revenue. So we're, we're bringing in more than I assumed we would. And, you know, of course, we continue to monitor. If you ask any teacher at my school, I'm the money, money girl. I'm always watching, you know, for wastefulness or, you know, using money in a way that is just not gonna work for us, so.
I know in the early years of charters, sometimes there are grants and private funds that come in. I'm assuming after 14 years, you may be past that as far as outside private money.
We haven't, we haven't recently received any grants, but in the past, the Walton Family Foundation has contributed on two different occasions to us. One 150,000, one 87,000 at one, at one point. So we continue, though, to look for new grants. I have a, a new staff member, relatively new anyway, and she's always looking for those opportunities, so I'm glad to have her.
Thank you for being such a strong advocate for your school and for hanging in there on such a long day. I actually am working with the community of Pocahontas with my day job and around the Pico plant. Obviously, it's anticipated. I've actually heard that in August, it's gonna be closer to 1,300, not even 1,000. And, but predominantly Hispanic.
Yes.
And so that was my question. I know that you have had very few Hispanic students, teachers on staff that were I know that you have had very few Hispanic students, teachers on staff that were ESL certified or could be prepared to help receive. I know these are questions that generally are being asked in the area, but in terms of, of seeing some of those kids, right, and being able to serve them?
Actually, 14 years ago, I moved here from Kansas. And I lived in Garden City, Kansas, who, they have a 60% Hispanic population. So I'm very familiar with just those children. And every time you get a children, children who are [bleep] different, they, they have a whole culture. And so the part of teaching them is learning that culture. But if you're talking about ESL or those kinds of programs.
Actually, ESL certified. Do you have any teachers that are going to take advantage?
I don't at this time.
Because they'll be, this year, we will have the, the ESL camps or the academy, correct? In, in June, as the department, I know you, the department used to. So are, are any of your staff going to take advantage of those opportunities to?
I didn't know that that existed. But, but how, how do I?
Connect with staff back there?
Okay, alright.
I, I plant the seed there, I know that that's one of the, the messages that we're taking. And if we walk away and approve the charter today, if you are thinking about that population and as connected to your own student population, I, I just wanted to be able to share that because there is obviously anticipated a large percentage of those families will be Hispanic, so.
There would be, so, yeah, we, we had talked about that.
Any other questions? Well, then, what is the pleasure of the board relative to the, let me see what item I know? Emboden Charter School, A43 Hearing Enrollment Renewal Application in Emboden Charter, Area Charter School?
I move to accept the charter panel's recommendation to approve the charter for, for another five years.
Moved by Ms. Look, second. Second by Mr. Williamson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. A44 is Ms. Boyd, End of Semester Reviews of Open Enrollment Public Charters in Initial Year of Operation, Capital City Lighthouse, Haas Hall Bentonville, Ozark Montessori, and Rock Bridge Montessori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we move on, I just want to clarify that the, you're agreeing with what the charter panel stated, including the annual reports?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Data are provided for this item to meet the requirement of Arkansas Code Annotated 623406 requires the Department of Education to conduct an end-of-semester review of each open enrollment public charter school in its initial year of operation and report to the State Board of Education on the charter school's overall financial condition and condition of student enrollment. So in front of you, you should have reports on both of, on both of those things for the four new schools that are operating this year. That's Capital City Lighthouse, Haas Hall Bentonville, Ozark Montessori, and Rock Bridge Montessori. We have representatives from each school here to answer your questions. Representatives from Haas Hall are on the phone, everyone else is here in person.
Okay, we'll take them one at a time then, starting with Capital City Lighthouse. Representatives from Capital City here?
Yes, ma'am, we have Lenisha Broadway and LaShonda Noel to represent Capital City Lighthouse.
We'll take one speaker at a time.
Do y'all have any questions? That's really, they don't have a question?
Do we have to swear them in? No, okay. Okay. We have some questions, who's going to be the spokesperson?
That'll be LaShonda Noel, she's the Regional Operations Manager for Lighthouse Academies.
Ms. Noel, would you state your name and position for the record?
LaShonda Noel, Regional Operations Manager for Lighthouse Academies.
Okay, Ms. Savers, I think has a question.
Good evening, Ms. Noel.
Good evening.
I'm noticing that you're losing population and wondering if you can, if you have any ideas about why that's happening and?
Thank you for your question. Am I loud enough? So, initially, we had a total of 344 students enroll. Several did not show up initially. What we have found in opening new charters, especially in communities where the concept of charter is not well-established, many [bleep] are still searching for what they believe is best fit for their student. And some parents have decided that the charter environment is not the best fit for their scholar. Many of our parents expected the charter environment to mimic that of a private school, and that's just not the case at Capital City. Parents under- understand now what to expect at Lighthouse. And the students that we have now are the students who will stay with us. While North Little Rock continues to be a mobile population, our enrollment is now relatively stable.
Any other questions? For Ms. Noel? But then what is the pleasure of the board relative to Lighthouse, I'm sorry, Capital City Lighthouse?
Do we need to vote?
I don't know. Report of all, okay, alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll hear from Haas Hall Bentonville. I understand he's on the phone, are there any questions? Who's on the phone, please?
My name is Martin Schottmeyer, I'm founder of Haas Hall Academy.
Okay, Mr. Schottmeyer, okay.
Members of the State Board of Education, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to have a Bentonville campus. I'm happy to report that our finances are strong and our enrollment is excellent.
Well, he's still, I think, he hadn't finished. I don't know what happened.
I turned the volume up for you.
Okay, is he still there, Ms. Schottmeyer, are you still there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would you start again, please?
I couldn't hear you before, could you repeat?
Okay, sorry, I apologize, can you hear me now?
Yes.
This is Martin Schottmeyer, I'm the founder of Haas Hall Academy. Commissioner Key, Chairwoman Newton, members of the State Board of Education, I'd like to thank you now for this opportunity of allowing us to have our campus in Bentonville. I'm happy to report that our finances are strong and our enrollment is excellent.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Schottmeyer?
I have a question.
Ms. Reith wants to ask a question.
Thank you, good, good evening, Mr. Schottmeyer. This is Miria Reith. I, I did want to ask you a little bit about, as, as you now prepare for another year of the lottery process. I recently had the opportunity to speak with some students who had recently left your Fayetteville campus and had obviously spoken about the lottery now coming down here to Little Rock this last year, and, and obviously a lot of [bleep] around that. But there was the impression that after that lottery, that students were, were still slotted in based on maybe certain, certain relationships with, with the school or members of the school in maybe a preferential way. And I just was wondering, I, I know this is something that's come up in the past and with you about specifically the Fayetteville campus. I, I don't have any specific knowledge to the Bentonville, but obviously those were concerning comments that came to my attention. And I just would like to know what, what your plans are around your lottery process for both of your campuses this year.
Thank you for the question. Say that, that we have a new process, it's completely done online. We have no preferential treatment and freely met with the state. The State Board of Ed- I'm sorry, this members from the state came and watched our lottery last year and watched our lottery again. We had a live lottery this year, where we had a number of attendees show up and they were here for the lottery.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Ozark Montessori.
For Ozark Montessori, we have Dr. Christine Solano, who's a school leader.
Hello.
Hi, please state your name and for the record.
Christine Solano.
Want to make an opening statement or just are you ready for questions?
I'm just ready for questions.
Waited a long time.
I have, I'm getting sleepy, so I'll let you just lead the way.
All right, any questions? Ms. Dr. Bar.
Thank you, thanks for, for staying around. You know, I've, I've been intrigued by the, the notion of, of charter Montessori, or Montessori charter, excuse me. But also a little wary about the kind of morphing of, of Montessori education into, you know, obviously a much more rigid system in terms of standards, in terms of testing, in terms of all those issues. So at this stage of the process, could you talk me through what, what have been the maybe special challenges of doing Montessori education as a public school? And, and maybe what, what's worked fairly well?
Well, a lot has worked very well. Our parents and students seem ecstatically happy. You can see by our numbers that they, we've stayed very close to capacity throughout the year. People comment frequently on [bleep] used to, didn't like school, now they love coming to school. Children who used to cry every day, don't cry anymore. So, so that's really rewarding. We also have several special needs kids who were either in self-contained classrooms or doing a lot of pull-out and were able to do inclusion. Our curriculum is individual, individualized, they are able to stay in the classroom. Some of the challenges we've faced are common to public Montessori schools. Financially, it's tight, it's very tight. You, if you ever look at our [bleep], you know, I take a very low salary, my teachers take a low salary, to, to be able to afford things like the training, which is very expensive between eight and 15 thou- well, it's around $8,000 just for the training. But then you have to pay the housing and, and food and everything while the [bleep] training. That's been an issue, finding trained teachers is an issue. So we've had to establish our own kind of a training system. We've partnered with an online training opportunity where we provide, you know, the hands-on mentors at our facility while the teacher [bleep] train, so that's been helpful. Every classroom has two adults because they are doing one-on-one and small group instruction. So that's an added expense. My teachers are passionate, we, they are dedicated. But the assistants [bleep] in each classroom are, are underpaid, so that's an issue. In a private Montessori, maybe where there's a little more revenue, I know Walnut Farm Montessori to the north of us in Bentonville, they, I think, I believe they get 8,500, you know, a year per student through the grants and gifts that they get. So they, they're able to, to hang on to their, to their assistant, their paraprof staff. But that's a pretty important component. The alignment with Common Core, that's kind of ongoing across the country. And so there are several leaders, states for a long time, such as Texas, West Virginia, Connecticut, Northeast especially, they've led the way. They actually kind of like the Common Core because that's just one alignment they have to do instead of a separate one for every state. So, but we have also had [bleep] startup money. We hired Montessori consultants, so teachers who had been doing Montessori for many years to sort of help us with the alignment and, and ensure that students were working on the standards. Montessori, for the most part, aligns very well, but there are a couple of gaps of areas that aren't covered. For example, economics, we've had to bring in extra curriculum to cover that. But by and large, just the philosophy of it, of following the child, being very child-centered, the natural sciences emphasis has been wonderful in our community. We've partnered with Illinois Waters [bleep] to restore the riparian zone behind our school. The School Garden Initiative, we've received several grants to get our school gardens up and running. So we, we just have a very energized kind of a community. We received a lot of help from [bleep] a local investor to renovate our building for us. If you ever get a chance to come up and see it, it's absolutely gorgeous. And so we're, we're very much enjoying ourselves and, and very satisfying. You know, challenging probably in the same way other new charters are, but, but we're just all excited about giving this opportunity to students who wouldn't otherwise be able to receive it.
And what portion of your staff are fully Montessori trained at this point?
Well, fully Montessori trained is a two-to-three-year process. Out of my staff, I have, hmm, well, I have two consultants who are definitely fully Montessori trained and, and one, one of my regular teaching staff who has completed the, the two-year process. Most of the sta- I have to say, most Montessori across the state of Arkansas is not accredited or certified. There's only one accredited Montessori school in the state, and that's Walnut Farm in Bentonville. And to be accredited, you have to have all certified teachers. So the teachers we've been able to find from the pri- I said it's very expensive, I think is the main reason. But, so the teachers that we were able to find who had Montessori experience came from private schools that did not certify, Montessori certify their teachers. So we sent all of these teachers to either summer programs or the online program. And so all of our teachers are in the certification process. They've all had some kind of an intensive summer training, as long as eight weeks. Some are getting ready to go for their second year. The upper elementary, they have to go for two years of eight-week trainings out of state. And then they have a mentor who comes to our school two or three times during the year. They have to fly up to their training place two or three times during the year. And then at the end of either the one or two year, depending what grade level, they have to go back to their training site for testing. And then they're officially certified. So it's a pretty lengthy process. But, but we feel confident that we are, you know, at least among the private Montessoris in our area, we're offering one of the highest-quality Montessori programs in our area. And we're actually offering professional development to the Montessoris and trying to share, you know, the wealth that we have with the Montessori community.
So my final quick question is, your, your balance, obviously, at, at the time of this report was, was, was minus 42,000, almost 43,000. What, what's your best estimate of what your closing balance is going to be this year?
We're looking at 20 to 25,000. Our original, our contingency fund in our original budget was over 90,000. And, and I'm looking back now, I'm glad that we, we had that much set aside because we did end up hiring extra staff, part-time dean of students slash bus driver, extra teaching assistants to help with special needs students in the classroom to do tutoring and that kind of thing. So, but we feel comfortable and confident that we're going to end the year on a positive note.
Mr. Black has a question.
I was just curious, how long are you and your other mates willing to take a pay decrease?
We are, we are, that is a, a topic that I've been trying to drive. I think my staff and even my board are not, I've been trying to educate them that, you know, right now, we have lots of passion, lots of excitement about what we're doing, but eventually, you know, money is what's going to [bleep]. Yeah, right. So you'll probably see more of us in terms of asking for an increased cap, you know, maybe additional programs. We're also, as I said, we're trying to bring in additional revenue through, through offering our services to the community. In our beautiful building, we have venues that we can rent out to the community that we hope can help pay for materials and trainings and that kind of things that will supplement our income. So I, I'm very much aware that, I'm very blessed to have the talent that I have. It was definitely a [bleep] kind of a situation where we drew a lot of talent. kind of a situation where we drew a lot of talent, and so now my goal is to hang on to that talent.
Okay, Ms. Ryan?
Thank you as well to you for spending so much time here and hanging in with us. I will say, where it brings me no pleasure in bringing this up, I was made a case on, in your campus, some accusations that maybe there wasn't always a receiving, positive receiving culture for all your diverse students and maybe faculty, especially those that came from diverse religious backgrounds, and that maybe there was a tone in the school that those, that maybe didn't come from a certain religious orientation, weren't welcomed. And obviously, that's something that's concerning to hear. I know it's a new school and new culture, and unfortunately, because there's not a strong grievance process as with our public schools and formal complaints, individual was referred to me and I in turn referred her to Ms. Parent to try and, try and get something logged and pursued there. But obviously, that's a concerning thing to hear, especially because the population you do serve is so diverse. And wondering if in this process of this first year and as you look forward, what things you might be doing along those lines of welcoming, yes?
I'm sorry, Ms. Ryan, I think I might be able to help a little bit and tell you why Dr. Solano has the confused look on her face. I believe you have the Montessori schools confused. This is Ozark Montessori that's in Springdale.
Oh, it's Ozark? Okay, sorry. But was I correct that Rockbridge is on here too? Okay, so this was just a call, my apologies then, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You threw me there, definitely.
Okay, we're ready for a motion. I'm, we're not in a motion, I'm sorry, it's been eleven hours and seventeen minutes and twenty seconds. Okay, thank you. Rockbridge Montessori.
From Rockbridge, we have Shannon Knuckles, who is the school leader.
Hello, my name is Shannon Knuckles, head of school at Rockbridge Montessori.
Okay, are there any questions? Ms. Ryan?
The question, I guess I was if you might speak a little bit to your first year and sort of the culture of your teaching and the specific issue I'm sure you're aware of as well, and so just anything that you've done in terms of the the culture of your school around your diverse student population.
Yes, we actually have a very diverse population. We have seven African-American, five Hispanic, and then thirty white students. And so we have drawn from eight different districts, and we have drawn a very nice population of students in our school.
Yes, I guess I was talking more about this specific issue that came to my attention around just a member of your community there that felt that maybe those of a specific religious orientation were maybe not welcomed, or that there was maybe a culture that it was all right to sort of single out or say things about people from diverse backgrounds. And just wondering how you address issues like that? What's the process that you've established in place this year? Maybe even beyond that case, more broadly, the process and just what you're doing within your teaching culture in your school?
Yes, within the culture.
Are you aware of what she's referring to?
I'm sorry?
What she's referring to, it's kind of general.
I think there was, there was an instance that came to our board, so yes, I am aware.
Would you enlighten the rest of us?
I'm sorry?
Would you enlighten the rest of us what you two are talking about? I'm not sure I understand.
Enlightened.
Legal? Because we don't know what it is, so.
So I don't know. I think that we can talk about it or not talk about it because it's vague and not clear. I certainly don't understand and not provide any information, so it would be unfair if we this is shot in the dark.
Right, I don't know what the facts are, but before anybody discusses specifics, the obligations on you all as a state education agency and the school as a local education agency are the same, and the information that is revealed that could identify a student reasonably to any person in the community should not be addressed. So you'll have to make a judgment call because I don't know the facts enough to.
I feel like it's a small community, that's where I would, I'd rather just leave it, it's
I think it's something you could speak to her privately. I think, I don't know what the other board members.
Well, I feel like it's part of the accountability, well, we've had conversations before about the accountability systems within the schools, right, of people that have grievances and such. I'm just kind of curious of what that looked like, right, or any, what happened of the culture, yes?
My name is Sarah Gober, I'm president of the board at Rockbridge Montessori. Aware of what incident you're referring to, there was an issue about what holidays would be celebrated and what would not.
That makes sense.
The part of our culture and part of our curriculum is that all children are there and they all share. One family in particular didn't feel like that we were sharing theirs as much as other children. And not only did we try to assure her that we were and show her a calendar to show her that we were trying to do our best to accommodate that, we also made it very clear to our parents because at that time it became aware to us that it was crystal clear what process they should go to about an incident that occurred in the school and concerns of theirs. We made it very, we advertised or went back to our parents with information saying what the steps could be on how they could address the, not only the head of schools, but the board, and also them to know that they could always address the State Department and this board also.
Any further questions, or does that clarify?
I think for what can be said in public, is I guess I mostly wanted to know that there was a process, and so that's.
That we had had a process before. We found it, obviously, that the parents didn't realize or understand that, and so we made it aware to all of our parents. And in fact, now it is, a grievance policy is where they can pick it up at any time if they come and pick up their child, because we understand that if they have a grievance, we definitely want to address that quickly and judiciously.
I'm grateful to hear that that's in place, thank you.
Thank you. Question, Dr. Barth?
I did have a question about the declining enrollments across the, across the year at Rockbridge. And could you speak to that issue? Is that there has been, I guess, about twenty-five percent of, so, I guess, twenty-two or at least at the num, the number is twenty-two percent lower. Could you speak to that?
Yes, we had, we've had students come and then they moved or, you know, found out that that was.
Would you pull the mic down a little bit so we can hear better? Thank you.
We've had some students come and then move on, but we've always been able to, you know, fill their slots, other students.
What percentage of, or what portion of your teachers are Montessori-trained?
We have, all of our teachers are going through training. So we have one teacher finishing her Montessori training this coming summer. And then our other two teachers were Montessori-training last summer and will be going to, the trainings two summers to come. They also completed three weeks of observation this year in a Montessori classrooms, AMI Montessori classrooms.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Yes, ma'am, that's all. If you guys would like to make a motion to accept the report, we would appreciate that.
Bye, Ms. Williamson, it's going to get quicker than that. And second by Ms. Savers, all in favor? Any opposed? Then the next item, it's A forty-five for Ms. Davis, consideration of final approval, twenty sixteen open enrollment charter school application.
Can we get clarification on who?
Mr. Williamson made the motion, and Ms. Savers seconded.
Okay. This agenda item, number forty-five, is the final approval for the open enrollment charter school application. You approved this application to open for public comment in February. We did receive public comments, but no changes were made, and we do have governor's approval on this. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I do ask that you give final approval for these pending legislative council approval.
Any questions? Could I get a motion for?
I'm particularly several of the comments that were made that seemed relevant and legitimate to me, but that legal dismissed is not so. So.
And let me just tell you, on those comments, the reason why no changes were made at this time is because these did go through emergency rules prior to in order to make the application deadline. But all of these comments, because some of them in review with the charter office were helpful and they were referred to the charter office for next year's application to try to see what could be implemented, so they weren't just dismissed.
Okay, and I think when we did emergency, I had expressed concern at the time about some of the same things, so.
Right.
So we will look more carefully at this for next year, is that correct?
Yes, and like I say, they had been forwarded to the charter office to review for next year's cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Now, can we have a motion?
Move final approval.
Move to, move to approve by Dr. Barth, is there a second? Second by Ms. Chambers, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next agenda item, A forty-six, is the same thing. It's for the district conversion charter schools. You approved these back in February, this application. It did go through a public comment period, which there were public comments received. There were no changes made as a result of that, but like the open enrollment comments were forwarded to the charter office for inclusion and consideration for next year's application.
Any questions?
A move approved.
Moved by Ms. Suk to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Black. All in favor? Any opposed? Forty-seven, Ms. Pfeffer. Consideration of recommendation to adopt the praxis, early childhood education for early childhood licensure for P four.
Yes, ma'am, Abby Pfeffer. Do you have any questions about this test adoption?
Seems there are no questions.
If there are any questions, we would appreciate a recommendation to adopt.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Suk.
Second.
Second by Mr. Black, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, Ms. Pfeffer. Second on insurance consideration, recommendation to adopt the praxis, English to speak of other language for English as a second language, K through twelve licensure.
Yes, we have, this test is being updated to align with the TESL standards, so if there are any questions, if there are not any questions, we would appreciate a recommendation to adopt.
Ms. Ryan, did you have any questions or any concerns?
I completely trust Ms. Pfeffer.
Okay, get a motion.
Move to approve. Move to adopt, excuse me.
Ms. Dean, move by Ms. Dean. Second by Ms. Ryan. Any questions, all in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? A forty-nine, Ms. Clay, consideration of final approval, section nine point thirteen point one of the Arkansas Department of Education rules governing Arkansas Comprehensive Testing Assessment Accountability Program and the Academic Distress Program.
Thank you, we are seeking final change to the rule that implemented the reward program. You also approved these for emergency approval, which is why either last week or the week before, recently, the reward money was awarded to schools. So unless you have any questions, I would ask that you give final approval to these rules and make them permanent.
Comment that it isn't accurate and it needed to be addressed in the public comments.
My response to that is, I think that they just didn't understand the, understand or or agree with the methodology that was used for growth. Dr. Arola is not here any longer. She would be certainly the to address that. But as far as being in accordance with the law, it is certainly in accordance with the law.
So you think they've just, the commenter just misunderstood? Because that's a, you know, that agency doesn't usually misunderstand.
I don't want to speak for what they, I mean, APSRC is here. If you want to ask them to further comment on what they mean, I'm looking through exactly what the comment said. I believe they were wanting us to put the full specific statutory language into the rule instead of what we had. There's not, we do a lot of times put the full statute in the rule. This is one instance where we didn't, and we kept with that in the rule change that we don't have the full statutory scheme for the five percent and ten percent in the rule, but it's obviously the law and that is how we're implemented. So the rewards were implemented in accordance with the law. The rule just specifies the mechanism for calculating growth and distinguishes that now we have rewards for performance and rewards for growth instead of performance and growth.
A move that we approve.
Moved by Ms. Suk.
Second.
Second by Mr. Williamson, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. A fifty is Cory Biggs. Consideration of final approval, ADE rules governing distribution of student special needs funding and the determination of allowable expenditures of those funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Cory Biggs, staff attorney with the department. And these rules have concluded two rounds of public comment. There have not been any substantive changes made between the second round of public comment and today. Any questions that you've got?
Question on the four point oh one point one point oh five, which was pulled. We had discussed this on the front end and had gotten a lot of comments. It had been, it had been pulled because in fact it was put in by ADE, not by the, a rule or statute. And then it winds up back in and then because the commenter went in and commented on it, so it makes us look like we, and I trust legal completely, and this board on the surface, it makes us look like we're trying to slide things in, and if nobody catches it, then it comes out. So can you speak to that, how it got back in after it was taken out?
On four point oh one point one point five?
It's about the three point, the three percent. Four point oh one point one point oh five.
I'm trying to find the response to our public comments, excuse me.
Well, I mean, y'all just said about eight people commented, and every time you said we pulled it, it's been pulled, it's been pulled.
And that made it into the final rules? Into the rules that were on the agenda today?
In the comments, you said you were pulling it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but were they commenting before you pulled it, or?
Those comments were before we pulled it, so the document that is before you for a vote today does not include that section.
Thank you, so moved.
Ms. Suk, and second by Mr. Black, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on, Mr. Biggs, A fifty-one, consideration of final approval, repeal of ADE rules governing balance, I know, distant learning.
Yes, these rules were March first, two thousand and twelve. They're simply being repealed today because we are replacing them with a combined set of rules governing distance and digital learning.
Move repeal of the digital learning rules.
Move for approval of rules for Dr. Barth, and second by Ms. Savers.
Distance.
Distance, I apologize. I'll do that one next.
Okay, move by Ms. Barth, second by Ms. Savers, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, going on to A fifty-two, consideration of final, for final approval, repeal of ADE rules governing the Digital Learning Act of two thousand and thirteen.
Same song, second verse, these are also being combined into the next set of rules.
For approval by Ms. Chambers. For approval by Ms. Chambers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Savers. All in favor?
Aye.
And your final one, I think, Mr. Biggs, is A fifty-three, consideration of final approval, ADE Rules Governing Distance and Digital Learning.
Oh, I'll be back in just a second, but, but I'll yield after this one. These are the combined rules with distance and digital learning, and as was sent out to you this week, we had an oversight. We did add in from the digital learning rules, which you just repealed, the section governing computer science course, or, excuse me, digital learning course as a graduation requirement. So this is the final product.
It's a pleasure of the board on A fifty-three. Concerning final approval for the Rules Governing Distance and Digital Learning.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Williamson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. You will be back. So we're going on to A fifty-four. Ms. Davis.
Can I ask a question before we move? Since we've moved rules into consent agenda instead of action agenda, could there be a sentence or a asterisk or something added on the things when they're putting, put in by legal, but not being required by the legislature or the, because lately, one with the three percent and one with the National Board certified, these were well-intended and based in fact, but in fact, the governor pulled one of them, and the co-ops got involved, and the other one got pulled. And so I just would like to know, as a board member, when it's a recommendation by ADE, and when it's something that the legislature passed that we're having to write rules for. Could, could we make, put a sentence in there so we'll know?
We can. We can do some sort of indication. My question would be, sometimes it is basically what the law says, but there might be some word order change. I mean, how, how far do you want us to go with this? And it will, it will most likely be some sort of, I'm trying to think practically how it would work. Because the draft that we send to you is what goes through the entire rulemaking process. So I would like to, if we can, do our best to avoid a complete other draft. The rules process, as you know, is long and includes lots of paperwork.
No, all I'm saying is, when it's put on the agenda, if you could say, based on history, we are suggesting the three percent cap, or based on the declining fund balance, we're recommending the ten years on the National Board certified, as opposed to me presuming you've written a rule as a result of legislation, so that people don't come up to me and say, well, the legislature didn't pass that. That's y'all, and, you know, and I just, to help us be better informed and a better advocate for ADE and what they're doing, it would be helpful if I had full transparency.
I think I have a solution, because I don't think we can put it in the agenda, because as you know, for example, our charter rules are sixty, eighty pages or something. And so making that designation in the agenda about each change, but part of what we have to do to submit to the Bureau of Legislative Research is a summary of changes, where Cory just put the one for these rules in front of me, and it goes section by section and says what was changed and why it was changed. And so, for instance, this section was amended to maintain compliance, and it refers to each section. Could we, for the next couple of months, include that in your public comment agenda item and see if that helps?
Or even on the, when it comes to us initially in consent?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I'm talking about. In the.
Oh, okay.
Just for public comment, it'll be on the consent agenda. You'll see a copy of the proposed rule and a copy of the summary of changes, and that should give you the information. If not, we can revisit it in a couple of months.
I don't want to cause a lot of extra work, but that would be helpful because of, of just a couple of things, which, two thousand and three years, so it's not like it happens frequently, but they happen to be big things. So it would just be helpful if we knew whether to say, well, you need to speak to your legislator, or no, we'll revisit that.
Right. We can, we can do that.
Would that make sense?
Yeah. Ms. Newton.
I don't even apologize. Go ahead.
So I, I actually had a related issue, which was, I was trying to look at the statute, and, and some things, especially, you know, when it gets to the, the big green book, it gets a little hard to find the actual original act with the index. I don't know if it would be possible, or easy, to just stick the statutes that are, that are being, you know, up with the, with the, with the rules, or is that adding a lot of work?
Well, are you looking for this or the act? I mean, we're talking about.
I mean, the, the act, before it moves to code. Because oftentimes, so there's a reference to, you know, acts, these acts amended the, the rule. And, you know, I was trying to, I was just trying to, in some ways, do the same thing, just kind of see to what degree did the, did the act reflected in the, the language, and where were the spots where it was really some, some, some language change that was totally from the department. So I don't know, that was another, I can go, I can go find it. It's not that big a deal, but it, it's just kind of nice to have it right there together.
We can add that to the public comment material.
Would be great.
Okay.
Thanks.
I don't even know where we were. A fifty-four, Ms. Davis. So that's where we are. Any other questions? Are we, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we hadn't started. I mean, but if you'd like to go ahead and approve, I'm good with that. I'll accept the, I'll accept the motion.
Williams and Dean, are we on? That's what I said, fifty-four. Oh, we're just starting out?
I mean, if you'd like to go ahead and approve, I would enjoy that.
We could have run three marathons. Even the slow ones could have run three marathons in this, in this time period. So anyway, I feel like I've run two at least. Okay, so let's start over.
Okay, so A fifty-four, I'm asking for emergency approval of the rules governing the creation of school districts by detachment. You did approve these for public comment to go through the permanent process earlier today in the consent agenda. And I believe it was earlier this week, maybe Monday, I don't remember, it's been a long week, that Ms. Kaufman sent out a draft to you of these, and I just want to say that I tried to make it as clear as possible, my email what had been pulled out. So they weren't substantively different than the original draft that had been posted, but I do just want to say, if you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer them. But these changes in this rule were a result of three seventy-two and nine forty-seven, if I remember off the top of my head, but there's a first-year funding piece that had been added. And as we discussed this morning, it is a result of, you know, we have a new district that's detached, we're kind of in uncharted territory, and so we needed to have a funding mechanism in place for that, and that's why we're asking for emergency approval.
Okay, I have two questions. One on six point oh three point three, where it talks about determining the value of the assets in the building, and it said, allow the state board to determine. I don't know anybody on the state board that's qualified to determine the value of a building in a district.
Right, and that unfortunately is by statute, that language.
Well.
We would just do our best to assist as well as possible.
Tell the governor to appoint an appraiser this coming time, if you will.
It's really easy to use the assessment, accounting records.
Oh, okay.
Seriously.
Okay.
Do have someone.
Right.
Okay, Brett, you're in charge of that. And then I have a note here, add that any student attending his or her senior year will be allowed to continue in that same school if the parents and the students so choose. So I guess in that instance, I'm thinking if there's a student who's a senior at Mills, and they're now living in Jacksonville, I guess my thinking was along that, right? I don't know if it's too late to get that done for that school, but I think in the future that that would be something that would make sense, because a student through no fault of their own or no fault of the parents, in their senior year would be distracted where they were going if the new school opted out of choice.
And we can consider that comment in our permanent rules promulgation process. I mean, we do expect that throughout the permanent process, we are going to receive some significant comments, so more than likely going to have to go through a second comment period. So if you'd like, I'll add that to the list.
Thank you.
Consider as a comment.
Move to, oops, you want to talk?
Let me say on that, because this, I think this is an important point. These rules, and our team have done a very good job of drafting these rules to apply to any situation that may occur, not just the Plasky Jacksonville detachment. And just so you know, that may create a situation where Plasky and Jacksonville may have to come before you, working out the details of some very particular things that they're dealing with. We left a provision here so that that, but just wanted you to know that there, there may be an occasion where those parties would come back and ask you to approve a modification or an additional component of the detachment order that you all have already approved.
And for full transparency, sort of a special ed student who is in that situation as a senior that did contact me, so that was why, I didn't know if it could be done or they would come before us, but I just knew going forward, had we thought about that, it would have been helpful.
Okay. Then move for approval by Ms. Sook.
Second.
Second by Mr. Williamson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're down to A fifty-five, consideration of final approval, ADE Rules Governing Nutrition Physical Activity Standards, Body Mass Index for Age Assessment Protocol in Public Schools. And we have one person signed up for public comment after Mr. Biggs finishes, Terry Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These rules were brought on in part by changes to federal law and also to a change in the PE requirements at state law level. The changes to federal law did allow us to create room for school districts to try some creative things, which I believe is, is part of what you'll be hearing about from the public comment. We received a lot of written comments and had two rounds of public comments on these as well. And the version that you have in front of you now incorporates all of the changes that are reflected in the responses to the comments, but.
I just think we need to make it clear that the forty minutes is PE, not recess, and not all the other necessary gross motor activities that need to accompany a day in order to work with, because kids who move more read better.
That's correct. And, and the recess is a separate requirement from the PE class requirement. And there's nothing that prevents districts from doing more than that, either.
Right, right. I just knew so many comments, but this isn't enough, and kids don't move enough, and we're saying, well, this is a minimum for the PE instruction, not for the kids moving.
Absolutely.
Move for approval?
We got public comment, Ms. Bryant, Terry Bryant. Just state your name for the record, Ms. Bryant. You have three, three minutes.
I'm Terry Bryant, and I work for the Malvern School District, and I brought students with me that I'm hoping will have an opportunity to, to talk to you about how this has impacted their lives, a fifth grader and eighth grader and a senior. I've been in education for forty years, and over the last four years, I have seen a tremendous change in a positive way for implementing, truly implementing Act twelve twenty. We've increased our physical activity. I actually work inside the high school. I'm a K through twelve school improvement director, and I oversee dropout prevention and a lot of other things. But what I have seen happen most recently has been with the physical activity, adding access to our curriculum so that students have fitness and nutrition, recreation and life, leisure, sports, other classes that have been added, so that our kids not only have those classes, but we've also built into our master schedule, a break during the day for high school students can go outside and do more socializing, but then come back and ready to learn. Our nutrition program has changed. We have a food service working with child nutrition that meets the guidelines, not only for the state, but the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. I brought our banners that hang in each one of our schools. Year before last, each one of our four campuses won the award, national award, and we were taken to Washington DC and recognized four out of the five schools of Arkansas that received that award. And that did not come easily. We had to prove that we were implementing those standards. So we have added, thanks to all the resources available through the wonderful Department of Ed, that I did not know was available, coordinated school health, school health services. We have received several grants, but what it wanted to me, that I wanted to, the students to highlight as well, I don't know if they hung up the banners or not, is the implementation of the fresh fruit and vegetable program. And I believe that when they tell you how it's impacted them, that you'll see why it's not just necessary for Malvern schools, but for other schools to also have access to it. Started breakfast on the go in April, and I have a thirty-seven and a half percent increase in breakfast participation. High school students take their food, eat outside, and still want to talk before class starts until that final bell rings. They want to be up, they want to be talking, they want to be with their friends. They don't want to come inside of the cafeteria, even if it's, it's. So that has increased. And our lunch program has increased thirteen and a half percent, and that's because we added a salad bar. The students line up to get their food and ice water. And I think that when I started, I was going to say, if I had time, I was going to say, y'all need to get up and do some physical activity yourselves, because you look really, really tired. I know this has been a long day, and, but I had so much to cover. But I, but I do want to tell you that students having, have an opportunity, whether it's to purchase, whether it's provided through it is for us through the grant program, they need that afternoon pickup, just like you need one now. You need a little bit of carbohydrate with a little bit of calories, not the soda, the sugar, but you need a little bit of a pickup. My district is seventy-four point three percent poverty. My kids are hungry. Many of our kids have two meals a day. Those are both provided at school. We have over two hundred kids out of our twenty-one hundred that go home with a backpack with food every day, and we have more that go home on the weekend. Is that my three-minute bell?
Three minutes.
Okay. So I'm asking that you give every school in Arkansas the opportunity to do what we've done, not to get a banner to hang from the wall, but because our kids need access to fresh fruits and vegetables, and they're going to tell you why.
Okay, we'd love to hear from them.
Okay. All right, we're going to, we're going to start with, do you want to go, would you like to go first? This is Mr. Tyler Francis, and he is a fifth grader at Wilson Intermediate School, where I was principal for twelve years, and I just met him today for the first time.
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Tyler Francis.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to be talking about the fresh fruit, fruit and vegetable. We have decided to talk to our peers about the fruits and vegetables that we get at the end of the day. So we were testing them and things like that, and we wanted to get recipes for them. So we talked to our cafeteria director, Terry Bryant, and she decided to put them in the cafeteria lunches. And so instead of just getting them regular fruits and vegetables, we're going to actually make them. So we're going to make fruits and vegetables into like apples and things like that. We're going to make like an apple lunch or orange lunch, instead of just one orange, make it a whole orange lunch, things like that. Instead of just getting them in the afternoon, we're going to get them at, we're going to get them like every day for cafeteria and a cafeteria. So that's what, one thing we're working on. And another thing we're working on is getting the, the preservatives and sweetener out of the fruit, to make them more healthy, but still be good. And so that's what we were doing in the afternoon, and we're bringing fruits into the afternoon, and we're giving them to our peers. And since I have told you about what our peers have thought about them, I'm going to tell you how it affected me. Fruits home from, from getting in the afternoon, and I gave them to my grandma and things like that, and she has made different types of meals with them, and that has affected my whole family by, we are eating more healthier now and things like that, because we have tried different things. The fruits and vegetable program has opened us, opened us up to different types of meals and types of healthier things in, in our, in our home and in our school. And so that's what the fruits and vegetable program was all about. So that's why we wanted to start this. And I have been in the fruits and vegetable program every year for the four years that we have had it, and we, it is a K through nine, ninth grade program, through twelfth grade program also, so that not only we get it, but everyone get it. Because we do not want to just make one group of people healthy, but instead of just making one group of people healthy, why can't we just make every group of people healthy? If we can affect more people, why not do it in a way that we know we can do? And so we also have worked on that with Go Noodle, and we had a Go Noodle, we had a Go News, we had a Go Noodle thing last year, and I have, I attended it, and what's it called? We won awards for being the highest in Go Noodle activities, so, so we can reach our physical activity, activity, and we have reached that, and we have got banners for that, as Ms. Terry, as Ms. Terry Bryant has said, and we have been hanging them up. And it's not only to hang it up on the wall, it's so that when people come in, they know that we have been eating healthy to inspire them to eat healthy also.
Right.
We're ready for the next salesperson.
Next, we have Mr. Hayden Woods, and Hayden is an eighth grader.
Hayden, would you state your name for the record, please?
Hayden Woods.
Go ahead.
So as I was saying, we have been into the food program, and I've seen this really change a lot of people's lives, because a lot of people, they do not have a lot of food. So when we have this fresh fruits and vegetables, they get to eat a nutritious apple instead of a chocolate bar that they would usually have. It impacts their home life, because usually when they would taste this food that they've never had, that's nutritious and it's good for you, that also puts that into their mind, thus making, kind of luring them to buying it and having healthier food for their family. This is, this has been a really good program, and all of my peers have enjoyed it. We always look forward to getting new foods and trying new foods, like we had a starfruit, and a lot of people have not tried that before. And we tried that, and now everybody likes it. So, so we're really wanting to encourage other, other schools to start trying this, to trying this food program, so through K through twelve, so a lot of people can have it, and this can impact a lot of people's lives. It is, it might seem like it's just food, but it's more than that. It's getting people to be healthier and getting people to have a life, so when they grow up, they can teach their kids how to be healthy and how to eat right. So this is really, it's impacted a lot of people, as I said, and I really hope to encourage a lot of schools and get a lot of schools into this, where my school and the high school and the Wilson School have really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Matt Keenan, a senior at Malvern High School.
I know I'm not near as cute as they are. Pictures, it's okay.
You're just taller. Set your name, please, for the record.
I will say that it is a pleasure getting to meet the actual Arkansas State Board of Education. We hear a lot about you.
It's our pleasure, Matt.
ADE requires this, ADE requires that. Well, it's nice to know the faces behind that. And I know that most of you, if not all of you, have raised teenage voice or have come in contact, or teenager in general. We like to eat. And the big thing is, we're going to eat regardless of what is provided. So the Smart Snacks that is part of Act 1220 has definitely changed the game when it comes to snacks in schools. Providing all these new nutritious snacks that are much better than the bag of Doritos filled with cheese that you can get from your local gas station, it makes a difference. It makes you feel better, it makes you healthier, and it carries over, like the two younger ones said, it carries over to your. If they see that someone as young as you can start eating healthy and changing your lifestyle, they can do it as well. And I will say, I'm kind of jealous, because being ninth through twelfth, Malvern didn't get the FFDP program until I was in the ninth grade. So I didn't get to experience the starfruit or the kiwi or, you know, have, which is something that I would appreciate, being open to ninth through twelfth, per district funding on their own. And also, thirty minutes before the school day and just snacks in general, if you eat breakfast in the morning, I know I feel a whole lot better. Trying to sit through an eight AM class and then a nine-thirty and then a ten, and I don't get lunch till twelve-thirty, that's rough. And I know a lot of the kids, like Ms. Bryant said, we are seventy-four percent poverty. A lot of the kids don't have breakfast. They don't have the option to eat, they don't have food at home. Those two meals are all they get. And so just providing the snacks and the food to the children, it makes them feel cared for emotionally, mentally, physically. It affects way more aspects than just the nutrition value. And I think that's important for schools to back up and realize is that we are concerned in just how they eat. And I really appreciate you guys for all you do, making such a difference. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. I wanted to just say thank you to Ms. Bryant and thank you certainly to the students. I think we lost an opportunity because we didn't know how impactful and how wonderful your presentations would be, but we missed the opportunity of having a larger audience of superintendents to hear this. Just think if they had heard that, and certainly they're not listening to us now, but it's just, you know, we've got food deserts, we've got some people that won't be introduced kiwis and starfruit, because they can't afford apples and oranges on a given day, so it's a big stretch to look at other things. But, so as we have the opportunity to spread the word, I'm certainly hopeful that we will continue. This is wonderful, thank you.
You guys are, you're totally voting this down now, right?
Got him, Dr. Varr?
Thank you all for the presentation, and obviously I'm very supportive of the Smart Snacks component of this. I am worried about one piece, and that is the allowance, and I'm curious whether it's in statute, in the act or in something that you have come up with, and that is the allow, allowing folks, student groups to sell snacks in the morning. Is that in the act or is that, where did that come from?
So that came from flexibility in federal law, which allowed us to, it was a determination up to the state to say whether we wanted to have the same definition that governs everything all the way from midnight through the end of the school day, or whether we wanted to create an Arkansas school day definition, which would allow, as long as they're Smart Snack compliant, food items prior to the start of the school day. And that's a decision that is left to the districts within the rules.
And what I'm concerned about is, you know, in the Forward Initiative, one of the most important goals is to get, you know, more, more schools to take full advantage of the breakfast program. And it's obviously very important that there be high levels of participation in that so that we can maximize access to that program. And I'm a little worried about some students, you know, veering out of the, out of the, the school breakfast program to make these purchases and not, you know, not, not use that program, and the schools therefore not be able to fully expand that program, including the possibility of going to hundred percent access to that program. So is it, am I right to?
We definitely heard that concern. We actually, in crafting the definition of Arkansas School Day, were responding to several districts that wanted flexibility to allow these entrepreneurial school programs. And also, I think it allows the type of flexibility that schools can take advantage of with programs like breakfast on the go, which in some places may result in a dip in participation in the breakfast program, but in some places may actually pull more people into the breakfast program in a roundabout way. And our response to the folks who made those comments was, again, this is a district decision. You know, if you're a small district and you are counting on those federal dollars for your breakfast program, and a student group comes to the superintendent's office to say, we'd like this program before school, that's a consideration that you're going to have to weigh as a superintendent of that district, and you're going to have to make the choice that's best for your district. If you're a larger district and you, if there is one to your breakfast program, and you see more of a benefit to these types of programs before school, and you think that they might even pull some kids in, then it's something that you'd be allowed to try under these rules.
Okay. I'm just a little worried about, about that piece. I mean, I understand the rationale, but it, I am worried that it may be somewhat contradictory with some of our work on the Forward Initiative and the efforts around school breakfast and getting kids, all kids off to a healthy start for learning.
Certainly. And I'll tell you, one of the comments was from the Child Health Advisory Committee. And what we, we went and visited with them on several occasions, and what we encouraged them to do in their unique role within the state is to hold us accountable on this. So if you see a net benefit in a year or two from this change, if you see a net loss, then we'll see that as well. And I think it allows us at the department to make more informed decisions that are based on the data that we'll get back, instead of just anecdotal, hey, it would be nice if we could do this, stories from districts, and of course, it'll make your decisions easier too.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion? Eight fifty-five. I still move. Move follow approval by Mr. Black.
Second.
Second by Ms. Look. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. Dr. Varr?
Thank you.
Ends our agenda, and can we get a motion for adjournment?
No, we have to report.
We have reports, Madam Chair. We still have our reports.
Oh.
Sorry.
That was tomorrow.
No, tomorrow we have training.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
You have the first report, Madam Chair.
But I got a statement.
Where are the brownies?
No, I, who's the person that made this, this agenda? No, I didn't. I don't, you know, this is, but seriously, this is twelve hours now and six minutes. I think any idea that we could be effective and efficient and on top of our game is, is anybody's.
And our other options are adding days or eliminating work sessions, or, I mean, there's just so many things that we have to fit in, and we, we do the best we can to get those in. Last month and this month is kind of unusual, because we have training that takes the Friday. It'd be back to more of a normal, whatever normal is, a normal schedule come May.
As soon as you leave.
I should be complaining, because I've got sixty-three days, but, you know, for the folks that are left after I'm gone, this is, okay, I have no report. Commissioner?
Grab my microphones.
No. Just a few minutes, get microphones grabbed.
We don't ever get to see you, so this is good that you're.
You look good standing up.
There you go.
See, we even got a thank you note for staying here so long.
No, this isn't a thank you note for you. This is a thank you note for, this is an initiative that we're working with. Ms. Newton will, I think, maybe talk a little bit more about this. This is the Arkansas Teacher Impact Project. What we would like for you all to do, state board members, and that we are going to do is ADE leadership, is to write a thank you note to a teacher, and whether it be someone that taught you, or someone that taught a family member, or some, a teacher who just, you want to express appreciation. We would ask you to, with everyone's phone, pretty much has a video camera now, if you would video that, we are going to be posting these, and Kim and her team are going to help with that. This is going to be something we'll put on social media. This is one of our efforts to help promote the profession of education. I want to thank Ms. Newton and for, maybe she'll talk a little bit more about this. You know, if she were still living, I would have written my note to Ms. Betty Slaton, who was my science teacher. We were scared to death of Ms. Slaton before we got there, and most of us were still scared of her once we were there. But she was about, you know, four feet, ten inches tall, and had her hair pulled back in the classroom, and she pretty much dominated the Girdon High School. And, but she really instilled in us inquiry-based science and, you know, tried to encourage us to think and solve problems and not just memorize. It's been very helpful to me. But just please, give some thought to who you can thank, and we're going to be posting these videos and sharing these around.
Video or a photo?
Video if you can, a photo if you must. But think of it, think of the ice bucket challenge, okay? You remember a few years ago, a couple of years ago, that was the big thing. So in the kind of context of the ice bucket challenge, this is how we'd like for you to think of this. Next month, we won't show it tonight, but the P Ridge video from our, the next edition in our innovation video series is ready. It's hot off the press, so to speak. I won't take the time to show it tonight, but it is up, and please take a look at that. That's my report, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Newton?
Just a little bit more about the teach, we're actually calling it Teacher Impact Celebration.
Okay.
Because we want it to be a celebration of what teachers do every day, and we're hoping it would catch on like the ice bucket challenge. You can celebrate a teacher that you had, a teacher your child or your grandchild had, can be a teacher, like one of my colleagues, or a teacher that you had in college, you know, anyone that's in the profession of education, there's so many teachers that go through and don't hear thank you, you know, or don't hear it often enough, you know, that are making, that are working hard every day, and what we want it to do, we want it to catch on. And so we're asking you to help us let it catch on. So we want you to do, do, do it and then encourage someone else to also thank a teacher, and then have them encourage someone else. And so we're hoping it will catch on like the ice bucket challenge, and hopefully we'll be able to get and some media people and really tell teachers how much we appreciate everything they do. Because sometimes they think that we don't, because of the different things that happen. And, Kim, are you still going to do the video? Okay, it doesn't matter, I know we're tired, but just to give you an idea of what to do, you can either do a picture or a short video, but we want you to use the hashtag AR Teacher Impact, and it's on the bottom of your card, and spread that word for everybody to use that hashtag, and then Bobby is going to post it, but Kim, kind of what we mean, but we really want you to. When I'm doing this, and you can see, these are our, our first grade teacher and a second grade teacher at my school, they're colleagues, and I didn't mention their name in the video, I felt so bad after it was all over with, I didn't even say their name. But elementary teachers especially, I had to come back and say, thank you for teaching me this, because when I got to college, I knew how to do it. Nobody goes back and thanks their first and second grade teacher. You know, think about that. How many times do they get somebody, you know, they don't. And so these, these letters were in tears the time I got through, because they were so, you know, somebody thought enough, I'll let Kim do that.
I want to celebrate today two outstanding teachers that have made a difference, not just in my life, but the lives of my children and grandchildren, and the lives of our students that are coming from not just our community here in Poland, but you have dedicated your lives to making sure students learn skills, not just math and reading, which you did a great job, but you made sure that they got those life skills that they needed that would carry them on. And sometimes as teachers, we don't always hear thank you, but I want to take today and say thank you for a job well done. And, and not just for students, but for me as a colleague. I have been blessed over the years to have you as a colleague. You have taught me by example, the things that you do, how you interact with your students, your love for your students, and appreciate all that you've done, and hope that you just continue at it and continue working for these last few weeks of school, and work hard for our kids, and just thank you for, for all that you do. You're outstanding teachers, and I'm blessed to have known you. Thank you.
If you don't feel comfortable doing a video, take a picture or, and, or, you know, do a video and mail them the card, you know, whatever you need to do, but thank a teacher, let them know how much you appreciate them.
Where do we send our video or photo?
You can send it to Kim or Bobby.
On the webpage that we had up just a minute ago, there's instructions and where you can send it with an email. Of course, you can always send it to me or our webmaster, Bobby, but on the website, there are instructions, and we want you guys to encourage other people to do this. We want it to catch on. Page, we also have the card that you guys have hard copies of. We have it electronically that people can download and cut down to size with the instructions that you can print off for them as well.
Just the rest, rest of my report, we're tired, I'm not going to talk a whole lot about it, because we did the, my topic for this month. a whole lot about it because we did, the, um, my topic for this month was on the Arkansas Standards Review, the process for the math and literacy. So if you want to know a little bit more about that, I encourage you to, to, you've got the link on your, on your blog. But one thing I wanted to say about that, so many things that you hear, uh, in the news or whatever, people are concerned, well, we've had three tests in three years. As a teacher, that's not what concerns me. As a teacher, what concerns me is we went from Frameworks to Common Core, now to the Arkansas Standards. I wanted to make sure that we had high quality, strong standards, because that's what as a teacher I would, that's what I use in my classroom, and these are. I'm very proud of them. Um, I think that there, if teachers, uh, teach these standards, the test is going to take care of itself, you know, and, and so, uh, they've done a great job with that. Uh, another thing I wanted to, to make a point of saying, because you have great reach, is our Teacher of the Year applications for the 2017 year have just been released. I, to go back to your, your districts and encourage the schools in your, in your area to submit a, a teacher to, uh, be a candidate for Teacher of the Year. Uh, those, those applications are online this year, completely online. Uh, the deadline for applying is July 1st, but districts need to start. So encourage your districts to submit a teacher, because that's just another way that we can thank, you know, it's just an honor to be a Teacher of the Year from your district, much less from Arkansas, but to, to go, or, or school, you know, so, so encourage that process in, in those, in those schools.
Okay, thank you. What's the timeframe for the letters and the videos? What are you?
Uh, we're, I'm hoping that it will be like the ice bucket channel, just, challenge, just keep going. Uh, you know, I really want it to be strong, uh, going strong in May when we have Teacher Appreciation Week. I want it to be strong by then, but I would love to see it, you know, and I understand it'll probably die down a little bit this summer, but I would love to see it pick back up next fall and just be an ongoing thing that we thank teachers for what they do every day, so.
Great, thank you. Great report. Our report for, for is a Learning Services report. Stacy Smith?
Madam Chair, can I interrupt for just a second?
Certainly.
Um, this is really quick, but, um, I just wanted to, uh, invite any of you who are in town this weekend to the, um, Educator Job Fair. It's going to be at Heffler International, it's from 10 to 2, and we have, I think Jeff Dyer said about 40 something school districts who will be there, ready to hire teachers. We've got lots of teachers registered, but if you've never attended any of the career or job fairs, it is so exciting because these people come in and they're ready to be hired, and they are so excited, and it's just a really neat thing. So it will really be cool if some of these videos are already being posted, and they're seeing that before Saturday. So anyway, just wanted to let you know that, we're excited.
Can I say one more thing? I, I forgot. The one, this is his brainchild. He, he talked to me a little bit in December about, you know, a way to thank teachers, and so we started talking and, and going, and so I wanted to be sure and give him credit for it. Stacy Smith, Learning Services. Um, I'm thinking after the kids presented earlier, I should have had an apple instead of a lemon bar, but maybe it gave me enough sugar to make it through. Um, just a little side note real quick, Ms. Newton, you're just a class act. I mean, you inspire teachers all over this state, and including adults, educators, and you just inspire us to do better. So just a class act, and it's been, uh, just been a pleasure getting to know you. Um, okay, I did submit a Learning Services written report. If you have any questions, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'm sure it was well-written and you don't have any.
I'm sure it is, and it was.
Please make note of the Spadig efforts for Little Rock.
Absolutely.
When you hear folks say, "There's no plan, there's no plan," there's a lot of stuff going on. So please take a look at that, and look at the training, look at the PBIS, look at the RTI work that's going on there, uh, strong support from, uh, from Stacy's group, helping Mr. Curris and his team to build capacity.
That, that's been a, a long-range plan. I mean, there's lots of work going on. Very proud of that.
I had those exact notes that, uh, some people may not believe there is, but with all the money and effort and time and energy, there's lots of plans being implemented in the Little Rock District on a day-to-day basis. And it was never ours as the state board's job to build a plan.
Okay, I don't have anything else from Learning Services. Anthony Owen has, he's the next on the list, and he had to go to a Boy Scouts meeting. And so, that's what I, um, he asked me to fill in for him. He submitted a written report for computer science, and then, as taboo as it is, he gave me a paper addendum to pass out to everyone, so I'll make sure you guys get that. But if you have any questions about computer science, I'd be happy to answer those.
In case you haven't seen, we, we just announced today Secretary of Education John King will be in Dale tomorrow, uh, because of computer science. Well, no, I'm going to be here with y'all, so, um, yeah, I, I can't.
What about me? I was there. Next week will be actually a big week in standards period because next week we release the English Language Arts Community Feedback, and also next week they begin the high school computer science writing of those courses. So another big week starting next week on standards. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I think you should make Mr. Goldsir stay here, and you should go.
I agree.
I think we need to have the, the Commissioner of Education represented when the Secretary comes tomorrow.
Yeah, Mr. Owen is going to be there with bells on, uh, I know that, so, um, that...
Stay on the limelight.
Yeah, yeah. He's becoming very well-known around the, around the country.
Drive that early in the morning after being here all day.
Take the 80 and climb.
Report, uh, six, Ms. Friedman. Please give your, your undivided attention to Ms. Friedman.
Kimberly Friedman, Director of Communications. You have a copy of my written report in your agenda. Any questions?
Sometime when it's not 8:20 at night, you might give a brief overview to the newest board members about the work that y'all did last year to get this started.
All right, thank you and good night.
Any questions? Thank you. No questions. That, that now is that, now's the time for adjourn? I'm sorry, but I thought this was tomorrow.
Quick question, because, um, Jay and I did go to the NASB meeting, uh, since we last met. Does everyone on the board know about the dates for that?
Yeah, that's, uh, June 24th and 25th. So it's just one night, it starts, uh, in the afternoon of the 24th, and it'll go until about noon on the 25th, so Friday and Saturday. Uh, more details to come. Um, the, um, NASB will pick up all the costs for the meeting, but, uh, travel, uh, is, is the one cost, and we do have a block of hotel rooms, uh, downtown for folks from out of town, about a hundred dollars, um, a room. So, uh, that is the 24th, 25th. Uh, and if you can just come for one, either the, one afternoon or the next morning, that would be great. Um, and Maria and I did meet with, uh, together, uh, met with, uh, both US Senators and then, uh, Representatives, Womack, staffs of Representative Womack and, and Hill, um, and of course thanked them for final passage of ESSA, uh, which gives us new stability and new opportunity.
Nothing further than we got a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Not really, I'm taking it because I would have come third or fourth.
Tomorrow at 8 o'clock, 8 o'clock.
Was that when you were talking about the NASB being?